Yes, good evening. Welcome to the June 27th meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:05 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, council members Asadryan.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Kasakyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Mayor Botman.
Here. And may we have your report?
Actually, we have the flag salute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always do that. Okay. Please rise for the flag salute. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation. Rabbi Schechter is here. And we're happy to see you and hear what you have to say.
Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members and city officials, dedicated police officers and firefighters, fellow citizens. We pray. Dear God, Source of Life, we pray for the well-being of our cherished Glendale community. May your blessings rest upon the members of our city council and its officials. Grant them a vision for our city that is wise and that is kind. Guide them in their positions of leadership and responsibility so that our community may continue to be a blessing to families and individuals, to organizations and to businesses that call Glendale home. Dear God, deepen our love for our Glendale community and our desire to serve it. Strengthen our power of self-sacrifice for our city's welfare and teach us to uphold its good name by our own right conduct. May our jewel city continue to experience civic health, vitality and flourishing and may it always be a model of justice and compassion and goodness in our world. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. And now, may we have your report, please, Madam Clark?
Yes. The agenda for the June 27, 2023 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 22, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, thank you. And what's next?
Next, our presentations and appointments. And the first item is Agenda Preview. The regular meetings for the city council and Housing Authority on July 4, 2023 have been canceled. The next regular meeting will be held on July 11, 2023.
Okay, thank you. And next, our consent items?
Next, our consent items, including minutes that follow our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Okay. We have a long list of consent items. Is anybody looking to pull one of the items? No? Anybody from the public wants to speak on any of these?
No comments from the public.
No comments? Okay, then I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Divine, second by Councilmember Asatrian.
Sure.
Okay, and we'll have roll call, please.
Yes, council members Asadryan.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kasakyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Mayor Botman.
Yes. Okay, and next is city council staff comments?
Yes, one sec.
Okay, and I'll see if my colleagues want to...
City Council and Staff Comments.
Yes. Councilmember Kasakyan, would you like to...
Thank you. First of all, I want to remind everyone that next Tuesday is July 4, where we celebrate the birth of our nation. And for anyone looking for something to do with the family, the 16th Annual Crescent Valley Fireworks Show will be taking place on Tuesday, July 4. Presale tickets are $9. Day of is $10. You can go to their website, which is CV Fireworks Association. If you just search down your search engine, it'll bring up the site. They have bouncers. They have a band. You can get there before the fireworks, which usually start at 9:00 PM. But then, on a more somber note, I'd like to ask my colleagues if we can adjourn this evening's council meeting in memory of a former mayor and council member, Carl Ragio. Carl Ragio was born in 1928 in Los Angeles. He attended Alhambra High School and then went on to John Muir College. In 1949, he met his future wife, Marilyn Lynn Lloyd, whom he married in 1951. He became associated with the California Institute of Technology, Jet Propulsion Laboratory, and was awarded a scholarship to Northrop Aeronautical Institute, completing his studies in 1955. He returned to JPL and became engaged in the Deep Space Program as a design engineer. During his 39 years at JPL, Carl was instrumental in design and deployment of several landmark spacecrafts, including Explorer 1, the first satellite launched by the United States into space in 1958, as well as Pioneer, Ranger, Mariner, Viking, Voyager and Galileo. During the late 1950s, he and his team of design engineers became instrumental in advancing the research and design of the Heart-Lung Machine, inspired by his third son, Nicholas, who passed away of a cardiovascular malformation at a very young age. Carl and Lynn moved to Glendale in the early 1960s, where he became an active community member. He served as a board member for the Glendale Unified School District from 1973 to 1985. He was elected to the Glendale City Council from 1985 to 1993, serving as mayor twice, once in 1988 and again in 1992. Carl was instrumental in forming the Tri-City Transportation Coalition for Transportation Improvements in Burbank, Glendale and Pasadena, and served as the first chair of the 21-member Board of Governors in 1989 through 1990. He went on to chair the Burbank-Glendale-Pasadena Airport Authority for the next 15 years. In 2013, Carl was appointed by Los Angeles County's 5th District Supervisor, Michael Antonovich, to the Glendale Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, where he served as a chair helping oversee the wind-down of redevelopment agency. Carl and Lynn shared a strong commitment to their Catholic faith and were parishioners and volunteers for over 35 years at Holy Redeemer Church in Montrose. While Carl's achievements were extensive in space exploration and local government, his greatest pride and blessing came from his deep love and adoration for his wonderful mate and large and cherished family. Carl was a patriot and staunch supporter of good government. He believed the universe was marvelous, unquestionably designed by God, and that every citizen has a responsibility to give back to their community and to take care of those less fortunate. Carl was a ninth-generation Californian and a beloved and exemplary husband, father, grandfather and great-grandfather, friend and teacher. Carl Ragio passed away on June 20 at his residence in Valencia, California. He is survived by his wife of 72 years, Lynn, his two sons, Carl Ragio III and his wife, Mary, Paul Anthony and his fiancee Natalia, and daughter Lisa and her husband Greg Patterson, as well as 15 grandchildren and eight great-grandchildren, all of whom will continue to live out his powerful legacy. Funeral services will take place Friday, July 21, at 1:00 PM at Holy Redeemer Church in Montrose, followed by a celebration of life and outdoor reception at the Museum Plaza at Forest Lawn Glendale. I personally would like to extend my condolences to the Ragio family, to Carl's wife Lynn. I had the privilege of speaking to Carl one last time, a week before he passed. He sounded fine. He was still asking about Glendale and giving advice. I first met Mayor Ragio in these chambers, I believe it was 1988. I was a young 4th grader at Artie White Elementary School, and I had written an essay, a bunch of us had written essays about why we were proud to be Americans, and he stood right there and shook our hands. And we all took photos, as we now do with those who come to visit us. He was Glendale through and through, someone who believed in the best of this community, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I?
Yes, okay. Councilmember Divine.
Thank you. I just would like to also offer my condolences to the family, to Lynn and Lisa and the sons. Carl was a force in our city. When I look at that picture of the council back then, Eileen Givens, Larry Zarian, Ginger Brenberg and Carl, what a council they had. But he was an amazing, kind, brilliant man and a wonderful family man and really supported this community, even after he moved out to, was it Valencia, I believe? He's just a great, great person. So, we've lost another good man. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you have any other...
Yes, actually, yeah. I guess on...
That is all. We've had a number of losses, and there will be one other one next week. Or the next time we are in these chambers, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Mr. Steve Artenian. But I think that Mayor Ragio deserves a German All on his own for the decades of service that he's given to this community.
Thank you. And did you have any other comments you wanted to make?
That is all. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I'll just, on a happier note, we just, council was very busy this week. We had so many great events, starting with the Age of Learning did their kickoff summer food truck luncheon. It was amazing, hundreds of people. What I didn't know about Age of Learning is that their program reaches over 10 million children worldwide. And what their goal is, is to make learning fun and to inspire kids to enjoy learning. And I just think that's the best message ever. The Armenian School Foundation also had a fundraiser. They provide school desks and backpacks, et cetera, to kids in Armenia. The most important, one of the most important parts of this foundation is they provide jobs for those, the residents there where their company is located. So, it's not only helping the kids, but it's also helping the older residents with jobs. Glendow Education Foundation hosted their annual donor celebration. It was well-attended and a lot of fun. If any of you watched Channel 5, KTLA, Eric Spillman was one of the awardees. I know I watched that. I watched him in the mornings. I didn't realize he'd won Emmys and et cetera, et cetera. But a Glendalean at heart. And even remembered, it was amazing. He remembered his teachers. I mean, he was reciting teachers from the 2nd grade, the 4th grade, amazing, the ones that influenced him and that he remembered. And finally, the Glendale Police Foundation hosted their very first gala. They honored Dr. Patrick Wade, who was the president of the foundation for many years while I was on that foundation board. But it was most successful, and I'm sure they'll repeat that again. And I know Chief was there and a lot of the officers, and it just was a lovely evening. So, all in all, it was very busy this week for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Asatrian?
Just wanted to add, the CV fireworks is actually free for active military and children under 7, aside from getting tickets. That's all.
Okay. And I would like to also extend my condolences to the family of Carl Ragio. I did not know him. I did, I've never spoken to him. It sounds like, it sounds like that was my loss. And I wish I had now, hearing about his legacy. I'm sorry that I did not have an opportunity to get to know him. But again, condolences to his family. Let's see. I, Councilmember Divine ticked off most of the events.
Yeah.
And I was also at, yeah, at the Glendale Education Foundation event, the Armenian School Foundation event. The one, I guess, you didn't mention, I'll mention, was Bike Safety Day. So, there was an event sponsored by the city of Glendale, AAA of Southern California, a group called Walk and Rollers, which works on getting kids more involved with active transportation, walking, biking, and they offer all kinds of lessons. And they offer private lessons that, I'm looking at Councilmember Asatrian because I really want to get her on a bike.
I've been asking you.
So, they do that, and we can, we can reach out to them. But anyway, they, there was a great event. It was at Pacific Community Center. It was also led by State Senator Anthony Portantino, who, if you don't know, is now an avid recreational cyclist. And avid is putting it very lightly. He is, he is a force now, as far as cycling goes. But it was a great event. They gave safety training to kids. There were free tune-ups, handed-out helmets and things like that. So, I thought I'd mention that. And I'll just close by saying, you know, happy July 4th to everybody. Be safe. Stay away from your own fireworks. It's, there's a lot of tinder out there that's very flammable, and it's going to be hot. So, let's not start any fires, but we have a great fireworks show in, in the Crescent Valley that people can enjoy. So, be safe, enjoy, spend time with your family and think about this great country that we, we all are blessed to live in. And with that, any staff comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I think from staff. Okay. What is next, please?
Next is community event announcements. We have one card.
Okay. All right. So, we'll call up Mr. Rafi Joe Vartanian, our poet laureate, to tell us about an exciting event coming up soon. Oh, this Friday.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the poem, and then I'll present the, the event for the poem. "Love is a jewel. Sappho's ruby-red rhinestone, emerald of elegance encompassing countless forms. Love is the jewel that is straight, curved, crooked, subtle. She is not uniform. She is not cruel. The jewel, love however, that bedazzled rainbow, she might be twisted by false prophets peddling distortions. Their moral panic mimicking moral dissent. Hate speech dressed in free speech. Theocracy presenting as democracy. Outside agitators disguised as caring comrades. White privilege appropriating minority struggle as in erasure festooned with righteousness. I love seeing through the disguise, for doing so reminds me that knowledge is power. Power is love, and love is a jewel inside of us all." Next, I'd like to share an event. I'm thrilled to announce that on Friday, June 30, from 7 to 9:00 PM, we are hosting Celebrating with Pride: An Evening of Poetry and Performance. This event is dedicated to celebrating Armenian creative and cultural excellence while fostering love, community and solidarity for the Armenian LGBTQ+ community on the last day of Pride Month by making our gathering a fundraiser for Gallas LGBTQ+ Armenian Society. We are proud to present a world-class lineup of poets and performers, including James Adomian, Mary Basmadjan, Arthur Kazakyan, Alin Ohanesyan, Alin Terzyan, Anna Hidjagjan, Armin Davudyan, Mashinka Hagopyan, Armine Iknadosyan, Huraer Khanjan and Sofia Armin. Likewise, we're grateful to our cosponsors, the International Armenian Literary Alliance, North Figaroa Bookshop, the Armenian-American Action Network, Ground Game Los Angeles and Rosen Rye. We'll unite on Friday, June 30, from 7 to 9:00 PM to show, show support, raise funds and cultivate hope in the name of love. Join us. Please RSVP using the Eventbrite link, http://gallas eventbrite.com. Location information will be provided 24 hours before the event. You must RSVP to receive the location. Valid photo ID is required for check-in. And finally...
It's okay. Continue.
Thank you. I wish to express gratitude to Chief Sid and the Glendale Police Department for everything they did last Tuesday to ensure safety and security before, during and after the school board meeting. We're grateful that the police are serving and protecting our community's right to assemble and promote diversity and tolerance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
If I'm, I just want to say to Rafi that I love the poem. I thought it was fantastic. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Okay, thanks. What is next?
Next, our action items. A, community services and parks regarding replacement of gas-powered landscape maintenance equipment with zero emission battery-powered equipment for all park facilities in the city of Glendale to achieve Green Zone certification. One, resolution establishing standardization of manufacturers dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the purchasing administrator to issue a purchase order to B&amp;M Lawn and Garden in the amount of $208,355.05 for the purchase of Still and Husqvarna brand battery-operated landscape maintenance equipment.
Okay. Mr. Galania?
Mayor Botman, Member of City Council, great news. As, as you heard, our community services and parks department is proposing to expand its Green Zone certification program to all 47 parks and recreational facilities by replacing all gas-powered handheld landscape maintenance equipment with zero emission battery-powered equipment using AQMD's exchange program. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kokopanosyan to, from our parks department, to provide additional details for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Galania. Good evening, Mayor Botman, Members of City Council. It's been a three-year program coming, but we are at the final stages of converting all of our parks to Green Zones. Very brief background, back in April 2020, we worked with our consultant, American Green Zone Alliance, to develop eight of our parks, exchanging the equipment we use in those parks to battery to get certified as Green Zones. Those parks were Casa, Dobie San Rafael, City Hall, Dora Mini Park, Harvard, Heritage Garden, Maryland Avenue, Verdugo Dobie and Wilson Mini Park. We used that opportunity to test the system, look for efficiencies, look for how we can actually do our job better with the battery equipment, started testing how long it takes to use the batteries, and basically overall evaluation of the system is going to work out. We are now ready to start moving forward to the expansion to all of our facilities, 47 park and recreation facilities. By moving forward this, we are going to be reducing 63 tons of pollutants from the environment in Glendale. That is 50 tons of CO2 and 13 tons of smog-forming pollutants. And this was an environmental footprint evaluation that was done by our consultant. We gave him all of the equipment we're going to take out of the fleet, the number of hours we've used, and this was calculated to be 63 tons of reduction in pollution, as well as, as you can imagine, the noise pollution reduction by using the battery equipment. It can be ranging from 40% to 70% reduction. Of course, the backpack blower being heavier and because it actually has a much louder noise. So, we'll be doing noise pollution reduction as well as air pollution reduction. In preparation for our full transition, we, we spent the year and a half to two years to develop, to do an analysis of what we need, the number of equipment we need. We're supposed to be housed, identifying the facilities that need infrastructure upgrades, working with our friends in the Public Works Department to conduct those infrastructure upgrades, such as electrical upgrades, such as ventilation, because we want to make sure those batteries being lithium-ion powered have an area that can be charged safely. We did the evaluation of the equipment we're using. First time we came to council, we had recommended the Still products. After a couple of years of use, we determined that Husqvarna product for the mower itself and the backpack blower are a lot more efficient for our use because the mower itself is self-propelling, it's easier to use. And the backpack blower, while slightly heavier, ergonomically is a lot more better. It's, it's similar to the gas-powered equipment. So, based on the consultant and our staff use of the field, we would like to move forward with that. And of course, identify the number of batteries we're going to need to make sure the operation is successful. And lastly, we're waiting for the AQMD exchange program, which actually kicked off for this particular run at the end of March, March 30. Since March 30, we've been looking at the details of the program. Slightly different than the one we had a few years ago, whereas one distinction, you can only exchange like for alike. For example, if you want to get a mower, you must exchange it with a mower. If you're going to get a backpack blower, you must exchange it with a backpack blower. Three years ago, we were able to exchange any piece of equipment that we had and get the equipment we need. So hence, we determined that. And the other item in here is, if you, in order for you to actually get the exchange program discount, it should be based on the manufacturer's suggested retail price to keep it fair for all vendors to be able to use it. And that is a question that had come up earlier. We consulted with our, consulted with our consultant in AGSA, and looking into further, we determined that is the way that the program is going to be working. So, the estimated cost of the purchase for the equipment to get us through the transition would have been $346,000. With the exchange program, we'll be saving $138,000 and the cost to the city will be $208,000. And this will convert all of our parks, as well as our partners in GYA, the Glendale Youth Alliance. Their equipment is going to be exchanged through this process, and their cost and inventory is within this evaluation as we move forward. So, the purchase process, we are here asking council to help us dispense with the bidding process, single source with B&amp;M. The question we get is to why. First thing comes to mind is, B&amp;M is one of the most experienced vendors in the field that deal with battery. They have been stocking, getting ready for this transition for some time, and they'll be able to get us all of the equipment we need in one swift swoop. They have the inventory for both Husqvarna and the Still back, uh, equipment. They're ready to deliver. It's going to help us with the transition period. You could imagine, there's over 200 pieces of equipment that we're going to be getting. And with that, the transition into replacing what we have in the field, inventorying it, sending to the right route, the right individual, is going to take a little time. So, in speaking with B&amp;M, they're going to allow us about a week of transition period. We'll receive the equipment, and then, once we have a transition period...
Exciting event coming up soon. Oh, this Friday.
Thank you. I'd like to start with the poem and then I'll present the event for the poem. Love is a jewel. Sappho's ruby red rhinestone, emerald of elegance encompassing countless forms. Love is the jewel that is straight, curved, crooked, subtle. She is not uniform. She is not cruel. The jewel, love however, that bedazzled rainbow. She might be twisted by false prophets peddling distortions. Their moral panic mimicking moral dissent. Hate speech dressed in free speech. Theocracy presenting as democracy. Outside agitators disguised as caring comrades. White privilege appropriating minority struggle as in erasure festooned with righteousness. I love seeing through the disguise for doing so reminds me that knowledge is power. Power is love and love is a jewel inside of us all. Next, I'd like to share an event. I'm thrilled to announce that on Friday, June 30th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. We are hosting Celebrating with Pride: An Evening of Poetry and Performance. This event is dedicated to celebrating Armenian creative and cultural excellence while fostering love, community, and solidarity for the Armenian LGBTQ+ community on the last day of Pride Month by making our gathering a fundraiser for Gallas LGBTQ+ Armenian Society. We are proud to present a world-class lineup of poets and performers, including James Adomian, Mary Basmadiyan, Arthur Kaisakian, Alin Ohanesian, Alin Terzian, Anna Hidjagyan, Armin Davudian, Mashinka Hagopian, Armine Iknadosian, Huraer Khanjan, and Sofia Armin. Likewise, we're grateful to our cosponsors, the International Armenian Literary Alliance, North Figaroa Bookshop, the Armenian-American Action Network, Ground Game Los Angeles, and Rosen Rye. We'll unite on Friday, June 30th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. to show support, raise funds, and cultivate hope in the name of love. Join us. Please RSVP using the Eventbrite link, http://gallas eventbrite.com. Location information will be provided 24 hours before the event. You must RSVP to receive the location. Valid photo ID is required for check-in. And finally.
It's okay.
Okay.
Continue.
Thank you. I wish to express gratitude to Chief Sid and the Glendale Police Department for everything they did last Tuesday to ensure safety and security before, during, and after the school board meeting. We're grateful that the police are serving and protecting our community's right to assemble and promote diversity and tolerance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
If I'm, I just want to say to Rafi that I love the poem. I thought it was fantastic. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Okay. Thanks. What is next?
Next, our action items. A, Community Services and Parks Regarding Replacement of Gas-Powered Landscape Maintenance Equipment with Zero-Emission Battery-Powered Equipment for All Park Facilities in the City of Glendale to Achieve Green Zone Certification. One, Resolution Establishing Standardization of Manufacturers Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing the Purchasing Administrator to Issue a Purchase Order to B&amp;M Lawn and Garden in the Amount of $208,355.05 for the Purchase of Still and Husqvarna Brand Battery-Operated Landscape Maintenance Equipment.
Okay. Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Bratman, Member of City Council, great news. As you heard, our Community Services and Parks Department is proposing to expand its Green Zone Certification Program to all 47 parks and recreational facilities by replacing all gas-powered handheld landscape maintenance equipment with zero-emission battery-powered equipment using AQMD's Exchange Program. And with that, I'll turn it over to Coco Panosian, from our Parks Department, to provide additional details for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Bratman, Members of City Council. It's been a three-year program coming, but we are at the final stages of converting all of our parks to green zones. Very brief background, back in April 2020, we worked with our consultant, American Green Zone Alliance, to develop eight of our parks, exchanging the equipment we use in those parks to battery to get certified as green zones. Those parks were Casa, Dobie San Rafael, City Hall, Dora Mini Park, Harvard, Heritage Garden, Maryland Avenue, Verdugo, Dobie, and Wilson Mini Park. We used that opportunity to test the system, look for efficiencies, look for how we can actually do our job better with the battery equipment, started testing how long it takes to use the batteries, and basically overall evaluation of the system is going to work out. We are now ready to start moving forward to the expansion to all of our facilities, 47 park and recreation facilities. By moving forward this, we are going to be reducing 63 tons of pollutants from the environment in Glendale. That is 50 tons of CO2 and 13 tons of smog-forming pollutants. And this was an environmental footprint evaluation that was done by our consultant. We gave him all of the equipment we're going to take out of the fleet, the number of hours we've used, and this was calculated to be 63 tons of reduction in pollution, as well as, as you can imagine, the noise pollution reduction by using the battery equipment. It can be ranging from 40% to 70% reduction. Of course, the backpack blower being heavier and because it actually has a much louder noise. So we'll be doing noise pollution reduction as well as air pollution reduction. In preparation for our full transition, we spent a year and a half to two years to develop, to do an analysis of what we need, the number of equipment we need. We're supposed to be housed, identifying the facilities that need infrastructure upgrades, working with our friends in the Public Works Department to conduct those infrastructure upgrades, such as electrical upgrades, such as ventilation, because we want to make sure those batteries, being lithium-ion powered, have an area that can be charged safely. We did the evaluation of the equipment we're using. First time we came to council, we had recommended the still products. After a couple of years of use, we determined that Husqvarna product for the mower itself and the backpack blower are a lot more efficient for our use because the mower itself is self-propellant, it's easier to use, and the backpack blower, while slightly heavier, ergonomically is a lot more better. It's similar to the gas-powered equipment. So based on the consultant and our staff use of the field, we would like to move forward with that. And of course, identify the number of batteries we're going to need to make sure the operation is successful. And lastly, we're waiting for the AQMD Exchange Program, which actually kicked off for this particular run at the end of March, March 30th. Since March 30th, we've been looking at the details of the program. Slightly different than the one we had a few years ago, whereas one distinction, you can only exchange like for alike. For example, if you want to get a mower, you must exchange it with a mower. If you're going to get a backpack blower, you must exchange it with a backpack blower. Three years ago, we were able to exchange any piece of equipment that we had and get the equipment we need. So hence, we determined that, and the other item in here is, in order for you to actually get the Exchange Program discount, it should be based on the manufacturer's suggested retail price to keep it fair for all vendors to be able to use it. And that is a question that had come up earlier. We consulted with our consultant in AGZA, and looking into further, we determined that is the way that the program is going to be working. So the estimated cost of the purchase for the equipment to get us through the transition would have been $346,000. With the Exchange Program, we'll be saving $138,000, and the cost to the city will be $208,000. And this will convert all of our parks, as well as our partners in GYA, the Glendale Youth Alliance, their equipment is going to be exchanged through this process, and their cost and inventory is within this evaluation as we move forward. So the purchase process, we are here asking council to help us dispense with the bidding process, single source with B&amp;M. The question we get is to why. First thing comes to mind is, B&amp;M is one of the most experienced vendors in the field that deal with battery. They have been stocking, getting ready for this transition for some time, and they'll be able to get us all of the equipment we need in one full swoop. They have the inventory for both Husqvarna and the still equipment. They're ready to deliver. It's going to help us with the transition period. You could imagine there's over 200 pieces of equipment that we're going to be getting. And with that, the transition into replacing what we have in the field, inventorying it, sending to the right route, the right individual, is going to take a little time. So in speaking with B&amp;M, they're going to allow us about a week of transition period. We'll receive the equipment, and then, once we have a transition to our individuals, the staff in the field, we'll be turning over the gas battery equipment, the gas-powered equipment, over to B&amp;M, thus finalizing the process. And the biggest part of it is, they're going to help us through the navigation program. It's a little complex to deal with the AQMD program, and they already have a program in place. They're working with AQMD. They actually helped us determine what the cost of these will be by way of reaching to AQMD and have it in the system, so the transition process is going to be a lot smoother going this route. And as far as next steps, with council's blessing, today, we'll move, working with our purchasing department, and issuing a purchase order, receiving the inventory, assigning to the appropriate staff and the facilities. We're going to work with AGZA to provide one last training for the entire staff, including the GYA youth that are going to be using the equipment. And then, we're looking at having a full implementation of the program mid-August to early September by having all of our park facilities, including all of our medians and the landscape sites, contract landscape sites, being all used by our battery-operated equipment. And at that point, we'll be working with our consultant, AGZA, to get us certified for all of our facilities to get Green Zone Certification. That is the summary of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Divine?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that this cost analysis and the program that we're using is better than going to Home Depot and buying these, this equipment.
Mayor Bratman, Councilmember Divine, in a short, yes. For one, the products that they have at Home Depot and the products we're looking for, they don't quite sometimes match. The Husqvarna product, they may be able to get it for us, but the prices we're getting, as far as the manufacturer suggests, the retail price is going to be the same to benefit from the Exchange Program. It has to be the process. And that is something, we have Dan Mabier from AGZA, who can certify that statement as he searched it for us. So wherever, whichever vendor we end up going through, looks like it would have to be based on the manufacturer's suggested retail price, and the discounts provided for each equipment is based on AQMD's programs, so the price should be the same.
Thank you. Just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
The only comment is, I'm glad at the thorough work and research that you've done, Mr. Panosian, with your staff. We're very excited about this. I'm very excited about this, and hopefully, we can get this implemented soon after council's approval.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm also very excited, and I couldn't help but smile because it's been a while since I've heard you're very enthusiastic and thorough reports during the Parks and Rec Commission days. And so I wholeheartedly support this. I'm very excited for it. You know, I was one of the council members, I think, that I emailed about the price difference, and I'm happy with what you have here and the answers that you've provided. So thank you so much.
If I may, I'd like to also extend the gratitude to Mr. Dan Mab, our consultant. I mean, the last three years, he's been working with us side by side through the process, through the evaluation, through the analysis, and he's always been one phone call away. And he is in the audience. I'm not sure if he would like to speak, but I could tell you, this process would have been a lot more challenging without having his support the last couple of years. So I want to extend that gratitude. And of course, mentioned Public Works, without their staff supporting, getting our facility infrastructure upgraded, we may be not at this point. So thank you and your staff as well, Mr. Galan.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, I wanted to just, you know, thank you for a lot of hard work over three years. Has it been three years?
April 2020.
Okay. And I think we all remember, I was not on council then.
I was.
Councilmember Divine was here when Dan Mab came with the South Pasadena City Council member, Michael Cacciotti, who is our representative on the AQMD, and they did a demo and talked about this concept and what South Pasadena is doing to implement it. And I remember taking his card afterwards and, as kind of a Glendale Environmental Coalition guy, and picked his brain and just thought, this is, this is something we have to do. And I'm so glad that we've done it. And you know, we often, yeah, Dan, come on up. You can, you could sit. Well, you don't have to go, Coco. You know, I know that lots of times, you know, we think things are, you know, easy, like, just do it. Just do it, right? And you've been very methodical about it, starting with piloting some of our smaller parks, learning about the challenges. I know there were issues with, you know, a place to charge the batteries that wouldn't be too hot, right? So you have to have some cooling put into wherever they're being stored. I mean, there was, there was a lot, right? And so I really appreciate how difficult sometimes things that seem simple really are and how much, and how much you've done. And Dan, every time I've reached out to you, we've had great conversations, and you're so enthusiastic about what you do. I know you come out of the landscape business, you are a landscaper yourself, and so you have a lot of hands-on experience with how this all works. So I'm super excited that we're doing this and.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, council members. I also really want to let you know how incredibly lucky the city of Glendale is to have Mr. Pasanian. Coco has just been amazing, and yes, it needed to be a process, one that made economic and workload feasibility sense. And lo and behold, here we are, and it's going to be one of the largest green zones to date, and we're working with the likes of LA Unified, Prologis, multiple municipalities, universities, and with what Coco and his team and his department has done with your help, this team effort, we really look forward to doing a ribbon ceremony, I think, when we are ready. But I really do appreciate the acknowledgement from you and Coco, but we want to reciprocate that back to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Divine?
Well, I want to thank, my comment is that Bravo, that we've gotten here. I was here that night. I did suggest that we get started with a program like this. You took, you ran with it, started the pilot program, and here we are tonight. So, Mayor, I would be more than proud to move this item.
Okay. Well, let's, before we do that, I just wanted to have one, one question. I don't know if, to what extent staff has talked to Glendale College and GUSD about doing something similar. I think since we're doing this, it'd be good for them to learn from our experience and hopefully make this a citywide effort.
Mayor Bratman, point well taken. We will be meeting with our partners in GUSD on non-related issues, and we can bring this up as well. Same with GCC. I mean, I would like to let you know that working with Dan, again, up and down the state, we've held courses on some of the successes we've held, some of the challenges we've had. So we've been spreading this process and pilot program that we have in Glendale to other agencies, even up and down the state. And yes, right next door to us, GUSD and GCC will, in future meetings, will let them know we've made the, we've made the jump to this process and welcome them on board and see if they need any support and help in what we learned through the process, we'll be more than happy to work with them.
Okay. Thank you. And so now I'll turn it over to Councilmember Divine to make the motion, and what do we have here? Just a resolution.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that's 8A1.
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Asad. Very good. And roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asad, Darian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Kaisakian.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Bratman.
Yes. Wonderful. That's exciting. Okay. What's our next item?
Next, action item B, Public Works Regarding North Rand Boulevard Complete Streets Demonstration Project. One, Resolution Adopting the Plans and Specifications for the North Rand Boulevard Complete Street Demonstration Project, specification number 3942, plan number 1-3114, and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
And Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Bratman, Member of City Council, another great news, exciting news, milestone. Staff in Public Works Engineering have completed the plans and specs for this temporary pilot program that will improve active transportation and the safety of pedestrians and cyclists. And upon your approval, the next step will be to advertise for bids. With that, I will turn it over to Sarkis Organisian, our Deputy Director of Public Works and city engineer, who has a PowerPoint presentation to go over the outreach efforts as well as the details of the design for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Bratman and members of city council. The item before you this evening from Public Works is regarding the North Rand Boulevard Quick Build Demonstration Project. We are pleased to say that this project addresses multiple council priorities, including infrastructure, mobility, connectivity, and safety. It will re-envision the North Rand Boulevard corridor between Glen Oaks Boulevard and Mountain Street by adding new mobility options and improving existing mobility options as well to improve access and the quality of life for the community. The project started in October of 2021, and after multiple successful engagement efforts, we are here before you this evening to provide this brief project update and ask for your approval to advertise for bids. If we are able to successfully bid this project, the construction of the project is anticipated to begin in October 2023 and be completed by December of this year. Following that, we will open the project to the public and begin the evaluation phase that is anticipated to last six months. As you can see on the screen, we have held multiple stakeholder engagement efforts, including online engagement, in-person community touchpoints, corridor bike and walk audits. We've sent mailers and fact sheets about the project to the community. We have also solicited the feedback and advice of both city professionals and community organizations and members through our advisory committees. We then brought the initial set of project alternatives to the Transportation and Parking Commission and the City Council and received direction to proceed with final design plans for a preferred alternative. The first community touchpoint, or community engagement, as I like to call it, was completed using colorful tree tags that were posted on street light poles in the project corridor. This was a creative way of piquing the curiosity of the corridor patrons with tags that contained project information and directed them to a project feedback survey. We then completed a door-to-door canvassing effort for the entire corridor, visiting businesses and residents to inform them of the project and solicit their feedback. For businesses and residents that were either closed or not available, we left them with project fact sheets in multiple languages. We also held a bike audit and welcomed interested participants to bike the proposed project corridor and share their feedback as well. We followed that up with a walk audit during the evening peak hour times and solicited feedback from the walking public in the corridor. As a result of our engagement efforts, our initial feedback survey produced valuable results that we used to further design the project alternatives. The preferred alternative that was chosen was Alternative 1A, which repurposes the roadway, removes one-travel lane in each direction, introduces a protected curb-running bike lane, and realigns and actually increases the available diagonal parking spaces throughout the project corridor. The protected bike lane is further enhanced with green markings in the taper, merge, and conflict zones of the roadway, and adds green bicycle boxes for bicycle-turning movements. This council provided valuable feedback back in August of 2022, and as a result of the feedback, we revisited the project design with our fire department and our fire chief, and implemented minor changes to address the turning maneuvers and ingress and egress concerns for Fire Station 26 located at the southwest corner of Brandon Stocker. As you can see on the screen, we added keep-clear markings and realigned the parking stalls in front of the fire station to make those improvements. We also heard valuable feedback on how to improve our project notification efforts. As a result, we worked with a consultant to refine the project website to share the preferred alternative plans in a more user-friendly manner. We improved the business relations section to solicit corridor business owner input on a completely non-mandatory basis, upgraded our surveys to integrate easier with mobile users, and added a subscribe link to allow those interested in project updates to share their email so they can be notified more easily. And we are still not done with our community engagement. After we advertise the project, we will hold another door-to-door canvassing walk. This is intended to remind the corridor businesses and residents about the upcoming project and also, more importantly, catch up with the new businesses or the residents that may have moved into the corridor. We will then host a pop-up table event in front of Trader Joe's and the Coffee Bean to further bring notice and solicit feedback on our proposed project to the shoppers in the community. Once construction is complete towards the end of the year successfully, and given this is our first demonstration project, we anticipate having an opening ceremony to further bring attention to this critical improvement in the corridor. We will then craft a before-and-after promotional video about the project and welcome the community's feedback on the completed project on our project webpage. We will finally wrap up the project with post-improvement traffic counts and data, including a final touchpoint after a six-month implementation period to determine the potential success of the project and the support for making these improvements permanent, also to welcome possible suggestions for improvement. Overall, we are very excited to bring this project, our very first ever demonstration project, and I would like to welcome any questions or comments you may have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Organisian. Questions, comments?
I think I have a question. How is this going to affect the left turn onto Brand by Trader Joe's coming towards Glendale from Burbank? I don't know what direction that is. I'm not a directional. I'm left-right. I'm left-right.
Going east.
From, okay, from Burbank to Glendale, getting there at Brand, and then you want, you know, a lot of cars turn left and they want to go over to Trader Joe's. Is there only going to be one lane then there on that turn?
Councilmember Divine, that area, yeah, that area of the corridor on Brand is actually still two lanes. It's the merge, merge taper section. So the left lane, the left turn onto Brand from Glen Oaks is still going to be maintained and protected, and there shouldn't be any operational issues.
But there'll still be two lanes on Glen Oaks?
That's the portion where the two lanes come together into one, but it's wide enough to accommodate the left turners, also for them to be able to enter the driveway of Trader Joe's and Coffee Bean successfully.
Okay. Because a lot of times it's, you're cutting across the two lanes.
And Councilmember Divine, as I mentioned, this is a pilot program, so if there are any complications, any issues that arise because of this temporary improvements, that's the period that we're going to evaluate those issues and resolve them.
I just don't want to be there when it's, there's a problem. And did you say there's more parking available with this plan now?
Yes. If you recall, Alternative 1A that was chosen actually provides approximately 10 additional parking spaces than what is currently there with the current configuration.
And I'm very impressed with all the outreach that you've done, going door-to-door and all the other, what, touchpoints, as you're calling them, that you've made. Very impressive. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaisakian?
Yeah, I think that this, well, first of all, when this first came to us and was proposed, I was excited about it. I think it's a great area to test out some of the things that we hope to do to support mobility, walking, people getting out of cars. I really like the outreach that you did, outlined in this. I thought some of it was creative. I saw some of those little flyers on the floors scattered, but it got people's attention. It worked great. My question is, there's a lot that has been, a lot has come on board on that section of Brand Boulevard since. Some really popular new businesses, one of them is a new pizza shop, there's a couple of other ones that are opening up. Have you gone back to maybe talk to these new business owners to get their buy-in, to tell them what's coming, so then when this starts, when we start putting up things and moving things around and painting the street, we don't get a number of calls from folks who are saying, whoa, 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 what's happening here? We weren't aware of this. And we say, well, but we did do our outreach. We did it back then. So have we done outreach to the new businesses? And mainly, I think, the ones that we've seen, there's that stretch right on Brand north of the Coffee Bean. There's a number of new restaurants and stores that have opened.
Councilmember Kaisakian, our planned outreach to inform both the existing business owners and those new business owners is planned for next month, early next month, in July.
and those new business owners is planned for next month, early next month, in July, and that's also the period that we're going to be advertising this project. And so during the advertised period, if any major concerns do come up from the community that we can incorporate as part of the project plans, we can always issue an addendum to the project potentially after we convene and we make sure that that is the necessary step to do.
Because there's something really interesting and organic happening with that stretch of Brand, and I'd hate to see us do something with the best of intentions but then stifle that growth. Thank you.
Mayor. Thank you. Councilmember Asatrian.
Well, I'm very excited about this project, just like I was. I think the community touchpoints and info that you have on here were the ones where we talked about the surveys not actually having the pieces on there. Was there more done after that? The initial survey didn't have the alternatives listed on the actual survey, if you remember that. You had to go to another page in order to look at the alternatives and then come back.
Yes. Councilmember Asatrian, that is correct. That was the concern that you had regarding the survey. That was corrected ever since that outreach event, and now when you go and take the survey, you also have access to the preferred alternative for you to view and analyze, both the plan view as well as the cross-sectional views.
Okay, well, I'm very excited about this. This is in my neighborhood. I walk this all the time. And then I'm hoping, once we also fix the length of time it takes to cross Glen Oaks, so you don't have to, like, run across Glen Oaks, I think all will be well. Thank you, I'm excited for this.
Thank you. And I know we have a caller, so just a second on that. Well, we've been over this, so I just want to thank you for this, you know, and Mr. Emrani for doing this and being very kind of thoughtful and methodical and careful about how we, you know, do the outreach. And just to remind people, and I was just reminded of this myself, the project itself is outreach because this is a temporary installation, and we put it out there as a kind of a pilot to test, and then after six months, we will look at what kinds of impacts there have been, and then we can decide whether to make it permanent or tear it out, or make it permanent with maybe some alterations, right? So I think it's important for everybody to realize that this is, this type of approach, it's a really, you know, it's a really great way to do things because you're able to really, without sinking a lot of money into it, test something out and get that feedback over a six-month period, right? So anyway, and I think this will, this will be our first, will this be our first protected bike lane in Glendale? I've heard that statement made.
It'll be our second protected bike lane, Mayor Brotman. We have a protected bike lane currently on Las Felas, a much shorter, a much shorter portion, so this will be a longer portion.
There's that little segment just as you're hitting LA there, right?
Yes, correct.
But this will be our, okay, our big one, right? And it's great. And hopefully, I know we're discussing another big potential project on Glen Oaks from Geneva all the way to Central, which would cross this potentially. This could really be part of an integrated network because you could connect from this to Glen Oaks, and then we're going to have, obviously, from Central to the Burbank border, we're going to have, you know, protected lanes that come in through the BRT. South on Central, we're going to have protected bike lanes that come in through the BRT. So it's going to really allow a lot of good movement that, you know, we just don't have today, so it's a...
Connectivity.
Connectivity, yeah. So it's a really, it's a really great start. I wish we could do more projects like this with these kind of quick build, this quick build approach. But anyway, let's go to the caller.
We have one card and one caller.
One card and one caller, okay. Usually take the card first. Okay, Mike Borisov.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Borisov. I'm one of the Assistant Commissioners of the Sustainability Commission. This is a really good project. It's been in the works for a little over a year now. I live on the street, actually, where it's proposed to be built, and if it does get built, I'll probably buy a bike, test it out. I don't know how to ride a bike, so we're going to see how that works with the new protected, parking-protected bike lane, which would be the first in the city because it's protected with not only a barrier but also parked cars, which is like an additional level of safety. That's right. I believe it also connects to three bus stops, which is nice because a lot of people bike to the bus stops and back. Just a quick suggestion, I don't know if this was part of the project, but maybe adding bike racks and shade trees, because this is going to be, you know, a destination for many people. And like, once you get there with your bike, where do you put your bike? Where do you lock it? So just that, and shade trees as well, because it does get kind of hot in the summer and increases walkability and the mobility aspect of the project. Thank you.
Okay, those are great comments. And yeah, I don't know if there are, if there is bike parking, I know where there is bike parking along that corridor, but I know there's that area that Councilmember Kusakian mentioned where there's the new pizza place, there's a comic store, there's, is that where the chocolate store is?
There's a chocolate store, there's a restaurant, I think there's a bakery coming in, there's a lot of cool things happening.
Yeah, it's a nice little area, so hopefully, if there isn't, I know I've ridden there on my bike, and I just can't remember now whether there was bike parking or I had to kind of find a fence somewhere to lock my bike to.
Mayor Brotman, and again, once this pilot program lives its course and we bring back a report with the final project details, we'll take those into consideration.
Okay. And our caller?
We have one caller, Alexander Yassine. Alexander, you're on air, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, hi. I'll piggyback off the previous speaker's comments, and I also live in the area, so I'm excited to see what this brings and evaluate it. A couple other things that can help mobility in the area, you know, paying attention to the beeline, maybe running those one buses later into the evening, that kind of mitigates the headache of passing across Glen Oaks, and also all that sort of comments about the shade trees. Those big tall palm trees, while they can look impressive, do you no good in the summer, and which certainly discourages walking and heat. So hopefully this helps connectivity, and I think it will be good to think ahead and how this ties into the BRT, help people get onto that, and just to improve the mobility in the area. So don't forget about the buses. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. And is that, that's it for?
That's all.
Okay, so, so, okay.
I thought we had, like, already talked about the shade trees when we were giving out the comments the first time around. We don't need to do any of that, right? Like, you guys have already taken in all the comments we had given the first time around.
Councilmember Asatrian, again, planting new shade trees and Public Works Department will move forward with that on a separate program, will not be part of this pilot for only six months, but again, when we come back with the final report for your consideration, all of that will be taken into account.
Okay, okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Asatrian, and is it, okay, just one resolution?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Divine. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Asakian?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Brotman?
Yes, very good. And what's next?
Our final action item is Public Works regarding building maintenance and repair services. One resolution adopting specification number 3945 for the citywide repairs and maintenance of elevator systems at various facilities project and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids. Two, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and awarding a five-year contract to Mitsubishi Electric U.S. Inc. for the proprietary maintenance and repairs of Mitsubishi elevators at Police Building and Central Library. Three, resolution adopting specification number 3946 for the repair and maintenance of industrial doors and gates at various city facilities project and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids. And four, resolution adopting specification number 3949 for uninterrupted power supply systems repair and maintenance of various city facilities project and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, City Council, Public Works, Facilities, crews and staff provide timely and efficient building maintenance services for all the city's facilities at an economical cost, if I may add. But these outlined services in the report are specialized and not performed by our own staff, including elevator systems, industrial doors, and battery backup systems. And as such, Public Works Department is proposing to contract these out. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Emrani, Director of Public Works, to provide additional details. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. These are the multi-year contracts that we have for maintenance of different elements of our facilities that is here before you, and with the exception of the Mitsubishi contract, which is for two at Police Building and one at Central Library, that we're asking for dispense and award to Mitsubishi, the rest of them will go out for bids, and we're hoping to get good bids and continue maintenance of these facilities. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? Questions? Any public comment? No?
No public comments.
I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Kusakian. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Asakian?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Next, we have Oral Communications.
Next, yes, Oral Communications discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to appropriate department for investigation and report.
May I ask?
Yes.
A point of privilege. Before we call up speakers, I did want to, and I meant to do this at the outset of the meeting, ask the fire chief, since next Tuesday is July 4th, we're not going to have a meeting until then, to perhaps come up and share with us some safety tips for families to celebrate the holiday safely, if you're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I know he won't be able to stay for the full meeting. Chief, I know we had a wet season, there's a lot of growth, and I'm seeing a lot of brush already dry in the hills, so I thought maybe we should remind our residents what to do and what not to do on July 4th.
Thank you, Mayor Brotman, councilmembers, Councilman Kusakian, thank you very much, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the fire department and the police department's concern with fireworks, and you brought up the issue of the brush clearance problem. And while that is an issue, that is probably not the most critical issue that's on our mind. Really, it's the burn injury risk, and that's what I want to just speak briefly about. And as a reminder for our viewing public, all firework use at the private level is completely illegal in the city of Glendale, as well as in most of our neighboring cities. Unfortunately, there are several neighboring cities where there still is legal purchase of fireworks. And what I want to make everyone aware of is that there's a statement on the side of a lot of those fireworks that says "safe and sane," and there's very little that is actually safe about the use of those fireworks. We probably remember two years ago where LAPD did a grand search and seizure of fireworks, and unfortunately, even in a large apparatus that was designed with a bomb cylinder built into it, had a dramatic explosion that injured public, damaged a number of private homes. And that's just an example of what can happen with some of the illegal storage. Even on the news today, the 5 o'clock news had a story where several days ago in Alhambra, there was a massive bust of fireworks. And we can't overemphasize the danger that fireworks, storage like that, creating fireworks, even using fireworks creates, not just for a large-scale explosion, but just for burn injuries. There's not a July 4th that goes on where we don't transport children to the hospital with burn injuries, even from the most simple of what we would consider the simplest of fireworks. With that, on Friday, there will be a large press release that all the local fire departments will be taking a part of, and I'd ask everyone to watch for that news footage, because there'll be some very dramatic footage that's shown of some of the effects that will be put on by the bomb squad of what fireworks can cause for us. If you do see any illegal actions or have any concerns of illegal actions, illegal storage or use of fireworks, we would ask you to please notify police and fire. We have a close partnership between our partners on the Glendale Police Department and the fire department. We will respond out. Any illegal use will be cited and the fireworks themselves will be confiscated. Thank you very much for your attention to this. We think it's a critical life-safety event and appreciate your time.
Thank you. And of course, take care of your pets, too. I know it causes anxiety in a lot of household pets.
I have a question. Do we have a PSA on GTV6 regarding this issue?
That's a great question, and I'm not 100% sure. I will look into that and we'll see what we have.
I think in the past we have, and maybe we can recycle one of the old messages.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea to get the word out right away. Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. And our first speaker, maybe we lost him, is Chad Kroger. No?
No.
Ah, we missed it. Okay, maybe next time. Peter Perrigo. Peter still here?
Yes.
Okay, I saw him. Okay, Anastasia Kanion? Do I have that right?
Kanion.
Kanion. Okay, you have, you have five minutes.
Okay. Esteemed members of the City Council, Mayor Brotman, and all those present or listening today, my name is Anastasia Kanion, and today I stand before you to advocate for a cause that holds significance for our community: the importance of creating a more walkable city. It is my belief that by fostering a walkable environment, we can ultimately unite everyone together, forging stronger bonds, and creating a thriving, more inclusive community. I acknowledge that transforming Glendale to a more walkable city is a challenging task. However, I firmly believe that it is a challenge worth undertaking. By prioritizing this action, we can enhance the quality of life for all the residents, not only doing that, but we can also boost local businesses, improve public health, and protect our environment. It is a multifaceted approach that holds countless benefits for our city and its people. As a resident of our city, I recognize the measures that have been taken, and we have seen an example of this today in today's meeting itself. A couple notable examples of, in the past, of things that you have done to establish a more walkable city is an ever-evolving infrastructure, the beeline, community events, plazas, and vibrant art. But really, what I'm trying to say today is, if you have ever tried walking around the streets of Glendale, if you have ever felt a lack of unity within our community, if you ever just had a simple desire to exercise, then you know exactly what I'm talking about today. An initial action to take would be implementing traffic calming measures, such as reduced speed limits, which can make our streets a more inviting area for pedestrians of all ages. Closing down the streets for specific events may also be an example of this, more benches, water fountains, the list goes on. But in order to support an ever-evolving community, Glendale must evolve as well. So this speech could be called a request from a concerned citizen or just a public comment at a city council meeting, but really, what I wanted to do today was highlight and hopefully prioritize the fulfillment of this long-due project for our city. Thank you for your time and wishing you all a nice evening.
Thank you. Anastasia, before you leave, because I love what you had to say, have you spoken here before, or is this your first time?
No, I've attended last meeting, but I haven't spoken before.
Okay. Are you involved with any of the, like, Walk by Glendale or any group like that that's advocating for walkable cities?
Not currently.
Okay, well, maybe look up Walk by Glendale, they're a good group. And I'd also recommend a really good book, if this is something you're interested in. It's called Walkable Cities by Jeff Speck. And I read it when I was first getting ready to run for city council, and it was, just, it kind of shifted my thinking about how you achieve. I always thought that this was something great that we want, but it shifted my thinking about how you get there and what it takes. So I would just suggest you look into that.
I will definitely look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Ramela Iraghi.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, this is a symbol of, I promise you bring a mattress, but this is a mattress too heavy, so I just brought a blanket. So this is just a symbol of freedom of speech? Well, as a matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, you are seven years of resident of the city of Glendale, right? You're seven years of resident of the city of Glendale. Yes, as a matter of fact, you think by agendizing, like, banal matters like hate speech or removing that three minutes of oral communication from the top of the hour to the end of the hour. that three minutes of oral communication from the top of the hour to the end of the hour, I think you think that you're a big shot in the city of Glendale, only being a seven years of resident in this, in this city. So basically, yeah, I'm going to let you have it if you think that you're a big shot. So by this, actually, I think that's a sort of violation of speech, that removal of the three minutes. It was like a tradition of like almost 10 years established by all the divine. I think that's a kind of violation, violation of freedom of speech. Okay, well, now we're all going to tell, oh, violation of speech is you're not getting rested for speaking up. Yes, that rationally, yes, but morally, no. Actually, morally, it's like you're curbing us. You're canceling us. So, yeah, but as a matter of fact, yes, it's morally, as Ayrseto said, you know, Mrs. Attorney, city attorney, that there's difference between moral and rational, rational. It's a philosophical argument that Ayrseto argued that. Yes, morally, you're curbing us. You're morally, morally, you're canceling us. So basically, I need my three minutes back, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you got five minutes instead. Mr. Durham. Alan Durham.
Mayor Brotman, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Alan Durham. I spoke last week in defense of Mayor Brotman. I'm not going to repeat those statements because I think I already made the point. But I'm here again to talk about concerns over the districting process and outreach and communication to the city. I attended last night's first community outreach meeting at Pacific Park, and there were three community attendees. May not surprise you that two of them were Ms. Quoc and myself, and only one other community member. And the consultants and the city staff, with all due respect, outnumbered the attendees from the community. So, you know, it does, it's not surprising it's off to a slow start, but I just thought I would let you know it's off to a slow start. And coincidentally, today, the California Supreme Court heard arguments in the Santa Monica districting case, just coincidentally. And it's probably two to three more months before they'll have any decision. And I apologize if I have to refer to my notes a lot tonight, but it's a technical issue that I've been struggling with. You know, when I spoke at the last meeting, I said it's been hard for me to connect all the dots and understand all the issues with respect to districting. And the decision that the voters are going to have to make, I'm just one of them, and I have made no decision, and I'm expressing no opinion on districting. But in his May 2nd presentation, Mike Garcia showed a slide, and this was really the only reference to it. It said, you've got two options for, to go to districting. You can, you can do it by amending the city charter, which takes a vote of the residents. Or, and there was a bullet point, there's a California Government Code, section 34886, which permits the city council to establish, it would permit the city council to establish five districts by ordinance without any vote of the residents. And this could be done, I believe, at any time. I stand that, to be corrected on that, that may not be right. But that was a revelation to me. I knew nothing about that government code. I never knew the city council had the, the power in California to go to districting by ordinance and a vote at the council. I may be wrong on this. I don't know if it's only three votes that are required. The city attorney's office would have to clarify that. But, and we already have three council members who voted to, you know, for the proposal to put the ballot measure on the ballot. And what I'm saying is, I don't think there are hardly any residents that know the council has that power. For instance, for example, if the ballot measure is defeated in March 2024, the city council could immediately, well, this one or future one, current or future, could at any time vote to go to districts. And of course, the real issue is we just have five districts, no elected mayor, as opposed to the ballot measure, six districts, and an elected mayor. So to me, this isn't getting through that, you know, I don't think the voter's decision is really, oh, we go to six plus one districting, or we remain indefinitely at large. I think what should be communicated is, we go to six plus one, or the council currently or in the future could at any time go to five districts, you know? And to me, that's the binary choice, and that is not being communicated. And had I not looked up section 34886, I never would have understood that. I mean, it was a bullet point on a slide. How many people even saw that presentation? But anyway, that's my, my issue. I think voters need to understand that. And I have one specific question, not that it has to be answered tonight, but with respect to Government Code, section 34886. May I just finish one thought? If there was a legal challenge to our at-large system before the May 2024 election, would the council, the current council, have the option to buy, to go by ordinance and establish five council districts and then proceed to the vote? And if the voters approved it, you'd have six plus one. If they didn't, you'd have five? And that's my technical question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Mayor, I'm glad this issue was brought up because one of the things I also wanted to mention, I just did not want to take up all the time during the council comments, was that there is a workshop tomorrow, June 28th, 6:30 PM at Dunsmore Park. I'm going to try to attend that one. Then there's, on July 20th, there's one at Brand Library, 6:30 PM, July 22nd at 10 AM, Griffith Manor Park. Anyways, there's a whole list of them on, on our website, and I want to encourage folks to attend for the reasons that you mentioned. And you're right. As far as if we were to go to districts before that, even if we were, I don't know what the, I would defer to the city attorney. But regardless of what would happen in a scenario like that, there would not be any districts per se until there was the next election. And then there would be, have to be individuals running for particular seats, and that's a whole different scenario that I don't know much about. That's why we hire a consultant. But very, very well-made points. You're absolutely right about the binary decision as to which way we go. I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just add one thing?
I think your time is up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I did have a comment on that.
Okay.
I had a conversation with Mr. Galanian after our neighborhood council, or council in the neighborhood, for us to see how we can better advertise that we're actually having those meetings. And perhaps one of the ways we can do that is to use the data that we have through GWP to carve out the area and send a note to the residents. Because I don't think that just by posting on our website, people are going and checking knowing that we're actually having a council in their neighborhood. So whatever additional outreach that staff can think of, I think it would be worthwhile for people to actually know if we're going to do that.
Okay, thank you. And if we could, somebody could get back to Mr. Durham with answers to his questions, how many votes it takes, and, yeah, and anything else. I don't remember exactly what he asked. Thank you. Okay. Our last speaker is Peter Perrigo.
Hello. My name is Peter Perrigo. I spoke a few weeks ago in regards to the refuse rate increases. I want to applaud you for reluctantly voting for it. It needed to be done, and it was a hard decision, especially for baking in a review process annually. I think that's very, very important. But I don't want to be a crisis provocateur. I want to come with solutions or at least some ideas. So I have come up with something called Glendale Green. The proposal is implement a citywide campaign designed to reduce Glendale's refuse costs by broadening the public's understanding of the trash collection process and encouraging better garbage etiquette. The program will focus on creating effective habits that help minimize the carbon footprint of the city and frame the refuse crisis as a community responsibility in which a small effort by everyone will have a big impact for everyone. Goes back to the basic reduce, reuse, recycle. Reduce. Waste reduction, what I call think small. Create a pilot program consisting of no more than 1,032-gallon trash cans. We have 96 right now and 64. 32. So that the black refuse bins giving priority to single-person residences and the elderly, people who would normally use less trash or create less trash. The purpose of this program is to gauge the functionality of smaller trash receptacles as well as gauge the public's desire for a lower cost here based on lower usage. It would further have the effect of showing the willingness of city services to provide a viable option to mitigate rising cart rates. Mr. Imrani and especially Mr. Hargrove talked about the idea that 32-gallon cans really aren't that effective. People have a tendency to overload them. Let's find out. Second, reuse. So waste reusage and repurposing, two programs on this. I call it plate to park. Encourage households to place scraps and food into a separate kitchen compost receptacle to then be emptied into the green bin in order to minimize the methane gas production in landfills, and then create compost to nourish and beautify our city parks. Plate to park. Get everyone behind you. Get Glendale on the same page for this. I think we can do that. As we say, encourage the public to reuse single-use plastics. Normalize the habit of at least two uses for plastic grocery bags or Ziploc bags, as well as plastic utensils and water balder, aluminum foil, et cetera. Now, the third is recycle. Waste recycling, I call roll win full. Encourage residents to only place full recycling bins curbside. This will minimize the time and fuel consumption of weekly collection by reducing the average number of bins picked up each day. Encourage the creative use of recycling materials. Upcycle is recycle. Let's get the kids involved. I know my kids would love to do something like that, art projects in school. I mean, have them lead the way. Mom, don't throw away that milk gallon. I can do something with it. The cost of doing nothing outweighs the cost of trying everything. I think this is worth it. I think as long as you guys lead this process, Glendale will get behind you and maybe not be so angry about the possibility of rate increases if they think that their actions could mitigate future rate increases. Anyway. One page. I hope you guys read it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Before you go, did you say you're going to email that to us?
I can hand you 10 copies right now.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for, for being thoughtful and, and suggesting solutions. We like that.
I would rather light a candle than curse our darkness, okay? Thank you, guys.
Okay. We have two callers now? Okay.
Yes, we have two callers. Our first caller is Alexander Yasan. Alexander, you're on air, and you have five minutes.
Hi. Just two brief comments. One regarding council districting. One, thank you for Mr. Durham making his comments, they're very thoughtful and helping educate the public. As somebody who is aware of what he mentioned, I just want to encourage him and like-minded others to reach out to your state senator, Anthony Florentino, assembly members, Wendy Carrillo, or Laura Friedman, depending where you live in Glendale, and voice your concerns. It's the law, it can be amended. It's a legislative matter that's forcing this conundrum. That aside, two, I wanted to make a comment about the beeline bus operator contract. I'm not sure if I missed it. I thought it was going to be on the agenda tonight, given there was apparently an execution deadline for the contract. So not sure if I missed something. Can I get any clarification? Did that get delayed to a further meeting, or did I take up too much time? Well, hearing nothing, I'm, I'm not sure what the contract stands, but I want to encourage the council to go ahead.
No, we did not discuss that tonight. That's going to come at a future meeting.
Okay. Okay.
The beeline bus contract. He thought that was coming back.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it will come back on July 11th.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I already sent an email to council, so I won't take up more time. Thank you very much. Have a great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last caller?
Our last caller is Dro. Dro, you're on air, and you have five minutes.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for taking my call. I just, I was wondering something. I'd like to ask the council why there seems to be selective outrage that seems to be demonstrated. It's quite obvious to a lot of the citizens here. I saw a quote-unquote piece of artwork displayed at Adams Square that depicts a trans individual that is stomping on a Bible and a human anatomy book. So my question is, why is something like this being celebrated instead of being condemned? Because if it was the other way around, I mean, I'm sure that would be the first thing brought up in this meeting. And my last comment is, I suggest everyone seated there starts working on their resumes because I promise you, our city is going to vote you guys out. You do not represent us. You guys have turned into far-left radicals. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay? And next is adjournment?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
In memory.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, sure. I would like us to, I would move that we adjourn in memory of the late and great former mayor of Glendale, Carl Raju.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned. Okay, 7:30. What, have we got up?